Injustice for all.
Okay, moving on. We've seen no public comment. We'll whip through some minutes and then we'll be ready to get, we'll move right to you. Okay, we do have some minutes for approval. We have our September 19th meeting, which was basically about the fire truck and so forth, the information that we had previous to our last, very last meeting, which is about the treasurer. I saw no issues of concern in those. But how about you, John?
I didn't see any issues.
Okay.
I would move to approve the minutes from September 19th for open session.
I would second that motion. No further debate or comment. Look for approval. Yes?
Aye.
Okay, I think you're good there.
And then we have, I would also move for the approval of the executive session minutes from September 19th, not for release at this time.
I would second that motion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Looks like a vote unanimous.
And then I would also move to approve the minutes from September 26, 2022.
I would second that motion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. I'm very happy to get the response from the candidate. And he is coming on board October 17?
Seventeenth, yeah, Monday.
Okay, sounds good. And, um, yeah.
And then the executive session minutes from that, I was wondering if we could actually update those a little bit more?
Okay.
And just clarify the hours and the percent over masters that we discussed before we approve those.
Okay.
And then those will be ready for, once we approve them in our next meeting, they probably be ready to go public, I would think.
Yeah.
But we can make that decision then.
And the rest of the minutes are being reviewed by the attorney first.
Okay.
So I would move to hold the approval of the executive session minutes from September 26.
I would second that. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. How are you, Mr. O'Sullivan?
Good.
We are, I'm just going to move the new business, since you're here, and the proclamation for the Jack the Shot Foley Day on November 6th.
You want to read that for the town first and just, I'm okay with it. I like it.
I mean, I'm fine with reading it into the record.
Yeah.
Whereas the Foley family moved from Brooklyn, New York with their son Jack at age 10. Whereas the Jack Foley attended Assumption Prep High School and became their all-time leading scorer in basketball, leading them to a state championship. Whereas Jack Foley was named a USA All-American for his outstanding basketball career at Assumption Prep High School. Whereas Jack Foley attended Holy Cross College, where he set almost all scoring records, many of which still stand today, and developed the name Jack the Shot Foley, for which he became known nationwide. Jack's number has been retired and raised to the rafters at Holy Cross, right between the numbers of Bob Cousy and Tom Heinsohn. Whereas Jack the Shot was taken by the Boston Celtics in the NBA draft with their second pick, second only to John Havlicek. Whereas Jack the Shot played a short time with the Boston Celtics and New York Knicks in the NBA. Whereas Jack Foley's first trip to Barry was at the Barry Centennial Celebration of 1974. Upon his arrival, he saw a great celebration in our community, pride and spirit. He declared on that day that Barry was the place he wanted to live the rest of his life. He moved here shortly after that day and happily lived here for the rest of his life. Whereas Jack Foley became a Barry policeman, served with loyalty and professionalism for that position for 35 years. Whereas Jack Foley coached basketball and mentored Barry youth in basketball schools for many years. Whereas Jack Foley became a Town of Barry Assessor and served in that position for over a decade. Whereas Jack Foley passed away on November 29, 2020. Whereas a book about Jack Foley describing his life and times entitled Jack the Shot Foley: A Legend For All Time has been written by Mark Pathfinder Epstein and is currently ranked as third of all time on the Amazon bestselling list on basketball. Whereas the author of Jack the Shot Foley: A Legend For All Time will host a book signing and discussion about Jack's life and of his bestselling book at the Stone Cow Brewery on November 6, 2022. The Town of Barry proclaims, Sunday, November 6, 2022, as Jack the Shot Foley Day. Perhaps no one would want to put this in this proclamation, but Jack the Shot Foley was also a public school teacher for all of his professional life and contributed a great deal to the West Public School System.
And also auxiliary or part-time officer for?
He was a part-time.
Part-time officer of the Town of Barry for many years.
Yeah.
I'd make a motion that we declare November 6 Jack the Shot Foley Day.
Hearing a motion and a second, further discussion, hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous vote. Thank you very much.
And can we make sure, possibly, do we have something drawn up officially, the climate from the board to be presented at?
Maybe we can do a little certificate kind of thing?
Okay.
Nice.
And what time, and what time does this thing start?
Don't you think the governor bill hasn't told me exactly what time yet?
Will you just get to Jessica if it starts at two or if it starts at four or whatever it is?
As soon as it's, I don't, maybe it hasn't been, you know, cemented yet.
Okay.
But yeah, as soon as it is, I'll definitely.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing that, too. Tell me, tell me this. Now, is his ex-wife his children, he has, he has several children he adopted?
He, yeah, they actually, he and his first wife Sandy adopted five kids.
Yeah.
And he's still in touch with most of them. Most of them are, yeah, were still in touch with him, right up until he passed.
Can you help me with another thing? Can you help me find the address of Michael Ryder Jr.?
I actually can, I have the phone number and?
Oh, that would be great. If you could email it to me. Steve Brewer and I are kind of looking for that information.
Yeah, I have it in my office.
I've tried to reach out, because I think I got the same number from either you or you gave it to the chief and I got it from him. And that has not let, I haven't been able to make contact, but?
Well, his aunt lives in town, Buzz Hale's wife.
Yes.
So I can try her next, I guess, if you, you have what you have. I thought it would work because she was just in attendance at the ball.
Yes, we, yes, and we sent contact with it, so.
Yeah.
The number was, I forgot quickly or something.
Well, it rang through, but I tried it a couple of times and it, they didn't have a voicemail set up, so I couldn't, I couldn't ask for a call back or anything, so.
That's weird.
Yeah.
In this day and age, okay.
Some people don't answer them and don't like the messages.
Well, that's true, too.
Their boxes fill and never answer.
He's a labor union organizer, so maybe he doesn't have anyone, want anybody to call him.
Probably in town.
Okay, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Yep.
Bye, Amy.
Bye.
Okay, so we now have the town administrator report?
Yes. I didn't have a formal written report this week. It's just been kind of a hectic couple of days and, but recently I went to the Barry Housing Authority. They had a grand, not a grand opening, but?
Yes, right.
Yeah, it involved the Barry Charitable Savings Foundation funding. So essentially, they built out some walking paths, benches, pergolas, they have a bocce court now, as well as the residents of the Barry Housing Authority, they made some art. And it's, it's a beautiful, I highly recommend, if you like to walk, go up there and check it out. They did a really good job. I really appreciate how they involved the residents in the process and, so I think it's going to be a great, great project, a great resource for them to use to get outside. So I did that last week.
Will that be maintained at all during the winter or is that just, you know, kind of a three-season thing?
So the walking path, I'm sure will be maintained. I don't know about the bocce court and the, you know, the benches. Or they also have a workout area where they can do, they have some outdoor workout stations. I don't know how much that will be maintained, but I'm assuming for ADA compliance, since the path goes all the way around now, that they will need to keep that path cleared for, for the winter. It's just a asphalt.
Clear and safe.
Yes, asphalt sidewalk, essentially, so.
Okay.
I also had a meeting last week with John and Jason and a member from CMRPC to discuss a South Barry infrastructure project. So essentially, we have CDBG funds that we applied for last year and we still have some funds that have to go towards a planning project for infrastructure. So we met last week to discuss what the parameters of a planning project would look like, what the, the scope of, you know, of the work should be.
How much money do we have?
It was a hundred and nine, a hundred and twenty thousand, roughly.
Can that go towards water sewer upgrades that we need to do?
It has to go towards a planning project. So it can't go to?
But this planning project could open up additional funds that could go to the sewer project.
Exactly. So again, I guess about 15 to 17 years ago, a very similar planning project was done. And so there was a lot of conversation about the need for, for this planning project. But after the last planning project was done, back in the early 2000s, there was a grant that went on and funded phase one of, of that planning project.
What was that specifically, do you know?
It was the water sewer infrastructure, or it was either wa-
Phase one of the?
Water or sewer.
Water.
I think it was water, yeah.
So, so after this planning, if part of this planning, okay, process develops a plan or for the infrastructure having to do with water and sewer?
Or for phase two, or whatever it might be.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
Yes, exactly. So, yeah, so we would focus on phase two. And essentially, the value in updating this plan that we have is that we're going to get new input from residents, the same people don't live here as they did 15 years ago.
Different uses of buildings now.
Exactly, so, yeah, there's a lot of?
It'll update income?
Yep.
Aspects and also, you know, create ideally more updated information for applying for block grants.
Right.
And one thing that's really troubling, and I know that Jason Pimental and others at one of our meetings with the DPW or the commission pointed out was that because some of our low-cost housing that and so forth, where children are on free and reduced lunch, et cetera, their parents' income doesn't count. What counts is the people who own the property. So if somebody owns the property, has a?
With, with this program, the scope is still being redefined. We, you know, CMRPC is taking it back to adjust the scope a little from our discussion. We're going to meet with them again, but I would say likely this will include going door-to-door and getting actual family income reports.
Well, that would be great because?
Of residents, not just owners.
Because our residents?
That's important.
The owners are not necessarily in the block grant category.
Right, and that, if that's going to step out, the grants is not going to help the people really?
Well, that's what, according to my connections with the sewer funding people, that's what happened to us there, that they looked at, you know, some of the higher per capita income people own these homes and we were looking for a 40% grant for the sewer and, but primarily in that area. And they just said, sorry, but?
And could, could this be put towards general planning for changes we'd want to make in just that whole South Barry area? That could help further the potential grant money again that we did last year, that we had such a tight scope for what we could put people up for, for these grants. Maybe that, maybe we could use some planning, something better for the area. That's the thing, we don't have to define exactly what it'll be, but if we, what we could implement to, to make more people or make more projects eligible for more of that money in South Barry in general. Because it was very, very, very small definition.
Yeah, I agree.
This, yeah, from, from what I understand, you know, the, the review, the planning aspect, it does very much focus on census block four, which is South Barry, Berry Plains, High Plains, but it will give a more broad understanding of, of projects that could be completed. They're not just water and sewer, but also roadway, parks, ADA, stuff along those lines, and give a wider range of things to pick from when different grants that could apply, different things do come up.
And the other thought would be, we talk about South Barry, if you're an obvious easy place to apply that money for people to get the grants and improve things, but there's a lot of areas in town. Obviously, in the center of town, people do all right and the houses are in better shape and their properties, but we have a lot of properties in the underlying areas that probably could use some assistance that, I don't know if we could use that maybe to find a way to include them income-wise in different underlying parts of town. Maybe instead of saying in South Barry, saying outside of the common area and somehow widen that scope, because we have, we talk about?
I think that might be something that goes more to a master plan for the town, where this specifically has to be about that census block. There's four census blocks in town.
It's going to be okay.
Yeah.
So this, this does have to apply directly to that census block. Now, looking at the 2020 census, though, as things are changing, the center of town might also begin to apply for some of these as well, as those numbers are coming in.
But you know when Neil Anderson's come in, is very upset about the property, we still haven't got finite, but there's, there's properties like that, even on 122.
I know.
And other places, the properties that could probably benefit from that type of funding and to, to not find a way to make it available to them is frustrating.
Well, some of it's just, some of these properties are just abandoned across the town. I mean, more than, more than we'd like to acknowledge.
And maybe if there was a way to get some funding to these people, they might put the money into it and make it something that they could at least sell, so someone else picks it up in the back of the, on the taxes for it and it's usable.
Yeah, so this is, because it's CDBG funds and it is federal money, it does go off of the federal census blocks. But, and then the other issue is that if you give money to these folks to fix up their properties, it becomes a lien on the property. So if they do decide to fix it up and then turn around and sell it, they would have to pay off the entirety of the loan, which might not?
But it might be, also still give them away, when they get upside down on taxes, they don't want to pay the taxes and they sit and wait for tax title. It might give them a way to get out of that and get out of the property without having to put money in their pocket, you know, even if it means grant money goes in just so they can make the property sellable to somebody. At least it gets them away from the property clean without having anything follow them. I'm, I'm just thinking it's?
Most of the?
If there's any way we can do it, just try to pick up some of these struggling properties in town, it would be nice, but?
Yeah, right now?
Most of the money has to be, you have to live and own in the, own the home.
Right.
That's where the money comes to now.
Right, and we have, so the project, the current CDBG funding that we're working with now, we do have a list of properties that applied through the lottery to have this funding go to fix their properties, but the state that helps administer the program is so short-staffed right now that they are behind on, you know, this is a statewide, you know, nationwide project, but across the state of Massachusetts, they are significantly behind on, on spending these funds. So even the people that we have waiting in the queue right now, it's still going to be some time before they even see that funding to help improve their own property.
So we did have enough applicants, we definitely need to do a lottery stat, you know?
Oh, yes, yes, we definitely.
So certainly, we still can apply down there for more funds and then keep?
Right.
Keep enough people going to utilize funds down there and improve without having to expand the area.
Yes, yeah, no, we definitely have, we have enough people who applied in South Barry for us to probably do two or three years' worth of funding.
Oh, okay.
And that area, it is a pretty?
I was worried you weren't going to get enough to apply, because there's a lot of those down there, big apartments and?
Right, and it has to be owner-occupied. So, yeah. And then coming up this week, I have a, a meeting tomorrow to discuss basically public health initiatives in the greater Quabbin area. So we're looking at a long-range plan of addressing different types of health issues, whether that's mental health, access to food, housing, and those type of issues that a lot of people in this area face. And then the issues are coupled by the fact that we are in a rural area and a lot of times, resources aren't readily available for these type of folks. So I am going to be taking part in a, in a seminar, a kind of a workshop tomorrow to see potentially how we can get Barry's needs, the needs of Barry residents included in this type of plan and see what type of, you know, information I can bring back to the Board of Health and, and to the community. And I also have, coming up this week and next week, I will be out of the office for a, a training to, it's a human resources-related training to do workplace investigations. So basically, anytime, anytime issues come up with employees that need to be investigated, this type of training is to help, help me know the right questions to ask, the right time, the right people to interview, that type of stuff. So I'll be doing that this week and next week.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, select board reports?
Sure. So last week, I did go to the CMMPO meeting to select a new representative for our subregion and a select board member from?
Paxton. Oh, he's, he's the second?
He's the alternate, yes. And the select person from Holden is the representative for our subregion going forward.
How many people just sort of entered up to that?
Um, so there's, there's, I think, seven or eight towns and five or six people showed up to the, aside from the CMRPC who was running it.
Greg, do you have anything?
I guess we'll follow back up with that policy. It's a nip tonight already, so we don't need to discuss it. And as far as the touch base on what I asked for, the descriptions for, you know, the structure of the commission and the DPW and stuff down there, it seems pretty clear that the commission was intended to oversee all water sewer and all.
Yes.
Water sewer and highway employees. So I am right in saying that we should have water and sewer updates at the commission.
Absolutely.
So we should, we can hopefully get them to begin doing that. And I, I still don't see any reason, all the more reason that it defines Jason as overseeing all three of those separately, that it's, we should be able to find a way, if the commission agrees, to, to move Kyle in. I think the problem we have is Jason's pulled so many different directions, we can't necessarily get him there for these meetings. And it'd be nice if we could have, you know, we can certainly have water and sewer come to those and give us their updates and have Kyle do it, you know, for the, for the highway.
Well, I mean, I don't know if he has, if he has the level of sophistication in the actual administration and management. I mean, maybe on the ground stuff?
But for the updates, for what's going on, which is what, we know generally at those meetings, they're looking for, we typically, we find out what's going on the highway, we discuss the ongoing highway projects, what they've done, when they're going to get to something and things like that. And Kyle certainly should have an idea. And maybe Jason needs to include him more on that level, so he has a better idea of the planning. And this goes back to when we asked down there for a month out planning schedules, we have an idea where these things are going. We certainly want Jason to be at those meetings whenever he can, but on the occasions where he can't be, I'd still like to be able to have the meeting, you know, see if there's any updates from water and sewer that we should know about and, and find out what's going on with highway projects, see how things have come up unforeseen, things that they did accomplish and whatnot. It keeps the town posted as well as to what they're doing, what's going on.
Especially keeping the town posted, I think, having?
Huge.
An idea of when a project is going to start, when it's going to finish, how long it'll be impacting your road. And, and, you know, I, I think, you know, we should at least be looking out several months, but at least have something a month out for the public.
And when for some reason, something doesn't hit the schedule, we'll at least be able to see day-to-day why. Well, this water main, we had a water main break, right? Oh, no. This South Barry, what is it, 67, I think?
But I mean, it's, it's?
Almost 32, yeah.
And, and obviously, not only to be from a pre, okay, of what's going to happen, to also give them information about why didn't we have water for the last, you know, when we, when the water main breaks, to explain to the public, okay? And I mean, but the public's going to have to do?
And Kyle can certainly do that.
Yeah, and some of the public is going to have to do a little work, you know, getting on a website and stuff. And one thing we do have with the new person that we've, you know, we've offered the position to for treasurer, he also has a lot of web design skillset, so we're hoping that maybe we can get a little more user-friendly approach to some of these issues that we talk about. I, I also can worry that Jason is still the person who's the head honcho. And what's important is to really appreciate that the administrative activities that he has should be reported to us as well. Whether, whether it's the sewer grant, whether, what, you know, what we, what we need for Chapter 90, what we're spending Chapter 90 money on, what we hope will be presented to the state, so we know what we're getting reimbursed for, so that we can keep, the new treasurer seems to have a good handle on that, the need to be involved with, with somebody like a Jason. So I think that's going to be really helpful. And so I just don't want us in any way to try to micromanage Kyle or anybody else. I really expect that, that function is Jason's and that Jason, Jason really has the expertise and the knowledge to do this. And so I really want to make sure he understands that that's our expectation for him.
It is, and I'm sure there are going to be occasions where he really can't be there.
Oh, I understand.
And I think, and there's nothing wrong with making sure. I, I think, I think if anything, he's underutilizing Kyle. That would be my guess.
Well, but see, I understand, that's our guess.
It's our guess, well, we need to have the meetings to find out.
Yes, we do.
But I think Kyle's very competent and, you know, he certainly understands what he has scheduled for.
And it may be, and it may be that, you know, just because we say it should be the, you know, Tuesday after our meetings, that may not make, that may not be a good schedule, because maybe that's why he can't be there or whatever. Maybe it should be a different time during the week or a different time during the month. I think we needed to ask that question, because that's just been the way it's been for 100 years, so we just keep doing it.
Yeah, I do, well, yeah, I didn't see anything in, in the outline and the design of that committee that said what, when it had to be specifically. So we could certainly move the meeting date off the Monday.
Or I think we should look at that. I don't know if that's?
Well, I don't, certainly, but that was the event you're looking at. We all understand now how the commission was made, what the intent of the commission is. It's very clear. Everyone should understand what the roles are. So, you know, we, we shouldn't be in the dark about a water or sewer project. They should be addressed at that commission meeting, because that commission should be directing water and sewer as much, in other words, the water commission shouldn't just do the water, they're supposed to take some guidance, because they fall underneath this commission.
Right.
And so does sewer commission. So this commission is the higher authority. And we should at least have the updates and never get caught, you know?
Like the last time.
With our pants down, as they'd say at the meetings, saying, I don't know why we need this money and not, and not fund it.
I didn't know we applied for this.
I think it's, it's completely reasonable to say, you know, this is what we expect, we expect a schedule at this time and allow that to be sorted out however it gets sorted out at that level.
And, yeah, the commission needs to collectively say, yeah, we acknowledge that this is our obligation and we need to?
Right.
To bring this, it doesn't take much longer at the meetings for the sewer, sewer and water meet, meet right before us. They can certainly give us an update on, on what they did at the meetings. That keeps us in the loop and?
Well, I know that there's been some effort of late to try to do that, whereas the water people have been there and the sewer people have been there. And usually, they, they meet a little earlier and give a very quick overview of where they are. And then most of the maiden, main meeting is, you know, dedicated to Jason and DPW. And you're right when you say we should have dedicated to?
And that absolutely is a, one of the tasks of that commission.
Right.
Is to give that, but that same direction should be done to water and sewer while we're there. It shouldn't be just on DPW.
I agree.
Really should have input, in other words, the water commission may have a way that they're going with something and they bring it to the whole commission. We just said, well, we'd rather see you do this or that first, and, and that's up to the commission as a whole to give that direction. And certainly, if we're talking about infrastructure and the major money we're getting ready to spend, the whole commission should be, you know, apprised as to that. And, you know, the waterside's a waterside, the suicide's a suicide, but often they go hand in hand and they run to the same locations. And you would hope they're all, you know, done at the same time. The roads are dug up, we're not, you know, we're not going to dig it up for water and dig it up a month later for sewer. And we're not going to pave it before they do that. And that's, that's all that needs to be?
Coordinated.
Addressed there. So that, I just wanted to touch on that publicly. And like I said, we'll get to the other policy in a minute.
Okay, I, what I would just like to request, Jessica, before you go on hiatus for your training and so forth, can you possibly get in touch with Spectrum and say, look, we need data from you? And it's, and I don't know if Josh, because he's the cable person, isn't he in the community, Josh Smith? And it's, and I don't know if Josh, because he's the cable person, isn't he in the community, Josh Smith? If Josh can assist us in this, but we have to have some sort of response from people, for people who keep asking. I, I don't know, a lot of people ask about Spring Hill Road, thinking it's a Spectrum issue, but it is not. And we can clarify that. But the people who are wondering, "Oh gee, you did this for, you know, we remember you voting on this, we remember the conversations about Spectrum," where are we with that initiative? And I know from Spectrum's perspective, I mean, we are at their mercy, quite frankly, and it's really sad. But it is a monopoly situation that we're really stuck with. And I can't believe we can't at least get them to respond to us, to show up at virtual meeting, to, they know exactly what we, what our questions are, they know exactly what our needs are. I just can't imagine why we have no response from them. And, and Josh, obviously, is part of that cable crew, and maybe he can, you know, make something happen.
Yeah, I can definitely, I mean, I've reached out to them, like I said, I've had several, you know, I've tried to get them to give me that proposal several times over the past couple of weeks. I've made some headway trying to work with them with the internet down at Felton Field. But as far as getting a proposal from them for this project that we've, that should already be in their files, because they've already done an analysis and they've given us a proposal before.
Two different prices, yep.
Well, there's probably gonna be three before we're done, right?
It's, you know-
My, my concern just is, they have an obligation to at least be responsive to us. And that, that lack of responsiveness does nothing for me as a person who pays every month for Spectrum to do its thing, as probably the two people who are here with me now, as well as the town. Okay, we pay our bills, we expect some response. And I don't think I'm asking much to say, "Gee, would you like to have more business from Barry? Could you please give us an idea about what that would, you know, cost as an investment on our end?"
Right.
So, I'm just, I'm just a little frustrated with, with the whole Spectrum idea. I hope somebody who works for Spectrum says, "Boy, was she, she being a radical nut asking you to respond to them." But I, I really think that the, the public, we owe the public, you know, getting on this, because there's no excuse for this.
And I'm sure we left it with Matrix, that they were gonna come up with a number for us.
But they knew that they couldn't compete because of-
We said we don't expect you to compete.
Yeah.
Because if their, their number, their intent, what they told us was they were gonna come up with a number and try to go past at least ninety percent of the homes in town-
Yeah.
-to, to hit those last few. So, that number for those last few would also offer fiber optic to ninety percent of the town of Barry. And that's something the town may be willing to put opera funds or something towards.
Well, I don't think we've got enough opera funds for that, but-
I, we don't, we don't know where they're gonna be on it.
Yeah.
We don't know what, what it's gonna be to get it out there.
Oh, I just-
And if we are talking about, that there's a number to run the wires and we own it, then there's a number if we're gonna pick up such a percentage of these people, they will. I mean, they, they'll bail off a charter in droves if-
Yeah, yeah.
-this came through the way Charter Street and people. The only time Charter came forward is once Matrix was here, they wanted to run in and give us that nice low number of a hundred and, whatever, twenty or seventy thousand dollars to do it all. And then, once opera funds get released, something sort of half a million dollars.
Well, the thing of it is, once, once we get something from us, we can at least then begin to decide, you know, from a cost-effective manner, do we call Matrix back and say, "This is robbery, can you help us?" I'm not saying that that's gonna happen, I'm just hoping that somewhere in the Spectrum universe, there can be, you know, the, the town of Barry is one of their clients, and I expect better service than no service.
Absolutely. Yes. And I'm, I'm waiting on actually two, two price proposals from them. So, this one and then additional price proposals.
Well, no, I, maybe calling Josh is, is, it would be a help, I don't know.
And, and do we look into state oversight on this and say, "Hey, can, they've got no intention of picking up our last customers, help us out, is this something the state can do?" And I once again say, I'd still wanna tell the state that they came in on this date and told us a hundred and some odd thousand dollars, "But you won't pay all that." And then they came in at triple that price once opera funds released. I'd like them to be able to justify, to the state auditorium worldwide, they have two numbers.
Unless we can go online and find the YouTube thing where they said that, Greg.
I did. I did before, back when we did it, went back on, it was right there.
I don't, I don't know, but you should do that again, because obviously, we have to have that really documented before we could say it. I'd, just if you said to me, "Murray, do you remember exactly that?" I would, I would say, "I remember having conversations with it."
We'd go back to the last time Matrix was in, it was sometime around then. So, I don't know when we, I don't know when we signed the contract with Matrix.
I'm sure we can back up with them, but that had to be like last fall, like a year, a year ago now.
Yeah, we're getting close to a year out for this.
And they're still waiting for Matrix up there, so nothing's fast.
Right, well, Matrix had this, they're waiting, they're waiting on the-
For Verizon.
Verizon to come back with their, with their cross network, which is the, which is what they said was the problem. They said they can, they can run those wires literally, I think they said in a week or less, and have it done. But it's, it's, it's waiting for Verizon to come back with the figures, and that's what they've gotta do. 'Cause they have to go analyze the poles and make sure there's room in the poles and/or the pole has to be replaced or whatever.
Well, everybody wants, doesn't have the licensing.
Anything with a guy wire, anything tension wise that could change with the natural wires.
So, that's what they're waiting on from Verizon, and obviously, probably lower than that autumn pole as well.
I just sent them the-
Well, then, perhaps, yeah, if you can-
My experience with utility companies, this is pretty much hard.
And say, "Yeah, they're getting crazy now."
And that's exactly what Matrix-
For any infrastructure work.
When Matrix came in, that's exactly what they told us. They said, "Yeah, we can build it in a year till Verizon gets back." And that's right about where we are.
Yeah.
So, hopefully, it'll be coming soon. But you never know, if they're shorthanded like everyone else in the world, it's, it's gonna be slower.
Well, okay, I think that, Greg, did you have something else on reports?
No.
Okay. John, you all set?
I'm all set.
Okay, so, let's, I don't think there's any correspondence other than proclamation that we received.
Correct.
Moving on, I'm gonna let Greg do this, because I know that he has a specific desire on this date, and I will let him.
Oh, well, I think it's the interdepartmental transfers.
Oh, oh, yeah, we have to do the interdepartmental budget transfers.
Yeah.
If you can pull it up on the screen, you can see the highlighted, a lot easier.
I, okay, and what I emailed was a incorrect version.
This one is incorrect?
That was the first version that Jean, Jean had sent me, and so, what's in the packet now is actually the updated, where everything is balanced.
Okay.
There's no outstanding balance.
So, can you, can you give me the highlights of, I, I know where the overages were, for example, down in the fuel account for forty-four thousand. I know that they, ninety-five thousand dollar capital income, the ban program that was not budgeted for-
Mm-hmm.
-in previous year. So, those are the biggies.
Right, so-
And then there's nickel and dime stuff throughout, that we had, we had to move to pay the ninety-five thousand dollars on the ban and the, make up the forty-four thousand dollar overage in the fuel account.
Right, so what you see on this sheet, you have, at the, at the top, it says appropriation transfer to.
Mm-hmm.
And so, everything that says transfer to is money that was overspent in the account. And then, below that, you have a list of accounts that say transfer from.
Mm-hmm.
And that's where the money came from in order to balance out all of the overages in the accounts.
This is FY twenty-two?
Correct. So, the most recent fiscal year that we just completed.
So, in FY twenty-one, I understand from talking with Jessica, that that ninety-five thousand dollars was also omitted from the FY twenty-one budget. And then, when it wasn't there, and so, it wasn't discussed by the finance committee for FY twenty-two. And so, that has been a problem that has now been corrected.
Yes, so, for two consecutive years, an incorrect number was provided to us to put in to pay down the capital improvement ban. This year, we, I communicated with our financial advisor to make sure that we were going to pay the correct ban pay down, 'cause obviously, this is a very big-
Number for us.
-big part of our debt. So, we didn't want to, you know, luckily, at the end of the year, we were able to find enough money two years in a row in order to cover it. But, you know, we don't, it's not good practice, so we wanted to make sure that we addressed that issue. So, we will not have that problem this year. And then, as you mentioned, there were a lot of overages in the police department because of some personnel issues.
Yeah.
The fuel account was a huge one because of the unanticipated increase in fuel costs.
And the total amount of overages in the budget was about, what is it, three hundred and twenty-two thousand and change?
Yes.
And thus, the transfers below, okay, from various accounts, cover the three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. And I believe we have, well, about twenty thousand dollars left?
It's a small number. I don't think it's even twenty thousand. I think it might be a little bit under twenty thousand, it's around sixty.
That will ultimately, maybe someday, go to free cash, if we ever find that out. But, so, I'm, I'm very aware of what, what this is, so I'm, I'm good. And I'll be entertained any questions that anybody else has.
Nope, I understand where we have shortages, and it's unfortunate to have that many, especially when it's almost a hundred thousand and I'm like-
Yeah, yeah.
Twice in a row for, for a ban payment, which is a hundred and ninety thousand of that total. You know, the hundred and forty remaining isn't outrageous considering everything we went through with the rollover in the police department especially.
Yes.
The increase in fuel is phenomenal. So, no, I'm not surprised, and I don't have any questions.
Yeah. I mean, we have, our staff, you know, are really good about watching their, their budgets. We just had, like you said, a couple of personnel issues that led to some significant overages. And we, you know, are hopeful that that will not happen again this year.
Okay, okay. I will entertain a motion.
I would, go ahead.
I would move to, yes, approve-
Yep.
-the interdepartmental transfers.
As recommended by our town accountant.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion made and seconded to approve the budget transfers as recommended by our town accountant and supported by our administrative assistant. And those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have a vote.
We have, the copy that you need to sign is in the folder. Along with everything else that you use.
This is a good time to say, I make a motion, let me declare Halloween, it'll be October thirty-first this time.
The only thing that I need you guys to decide is the, the hours too. I didn't include, typically, the hours are six to eight, but I leave that up to you guys.
We have in the past, well, when she acknowledges motion, second one discussion, I said.
Uh, I'll make the motion.
I made the motion, you hear me?
Okay, will you second it? Those in favor of the-
Nope, that discussion.
Oh, you're discussing the thirty-first?
No, yeah, if you're gonna have discussion on it.
Okay, you're gonna have discussion on the thirty-first? No, you're, the time of the day?
Yes.
Okay. Hearing your discussion, I'm interested-
Well, thank you. Yes, in the past, we've tried opening up, we've tried going, widening the hours, really, 'cause, you know, gives some people time. It lets the kids get out early with little kids, if you started at five, you know, start at five, and sometimes extend a little later, it gives people that can't get home to five, don't get out till five-thirty-six, gives them a little more chance to take the kids out. And we've tried widening the hours, but I don't think it's necessary. I think generally, you know, people are accommodating, they're ready before that anyways. No one's running to shut their lights off if kids are still out and about, so I'm happy with the six to eight. If, unless anyone else has anything else to say.
You've got young children, what's your take on this?
Um, it's gonna be a fun experiment with little kids. It's, you know, we, we did trick or treat last year at the, you know, I think the time was, I, I don't remember what time we went or started, but I think it worked fine last year.
I think it was six P.M.
Yeah.
I mean, I know it's important for it to be dark for kids. And certainly, six to eight is probably, you know, kinda typical in all the communities. I do know that anything that we can do to make certain people remember, without children, people don't necessarily remember. And it is a very dark center of the town when it is trick or treat night. It, you, you really have to say, "Okay, there might be kids trick or treating and really accommodate that idea with your driving." Because it's very dark and there's lots of kids, and they, especially uptown. They are moving and shaking and all over. And down on West Road, same thing, down on thirty-two. And so, just to, you know, bring it to the attention of our, our police department, that they might put a sign, be, be safe.
I think that, I mean, honestly, that might be one of the biggest questions we've, you know, it's being a weekday, people are coming back around five. I almost wonder if it would be better to start earlier so that people are being more cautious as people are moving around? Or if it's maybe-
It, it doesn't hurt, we've always, we've done five to eight, it doesn't hurt anything to do with it.
Yeah.
You know, then, some people might get frustrated, 'cause they don't get home, but, and they have time setting up before that to give out candy too. But, you know, if they're not ready that early, they're not ready that early. People, people get there when they can.
And if you have kids where you'd prefer to go out while it's still a little bit lighter, you know, you'd be expecting that less houses would be repaired anyway.
Right.
So, I'd go from, I think five to eight would be.
So, I'd, I'd accept that modification to my motion as five to eight.
Any further discussion on that modification?
No.
Hearing none. Those in favor of trick or treat on the thirty-first at between the hours of five P.M. and eight P.M.?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Looks like a unanimous vote. And we've all now made some people happy and some people sad. Well, 'cause some people say, "Do it on the weekend, it's so much easier." Okay, personnel. We have a wage authorization for-
The wage authorization and the letter of understanding that we are offering our new treasurer collector.
I'd make a motion that we authorize Justin Paulson.
It's Jake Volker.
Oh, I was going through the F, just wanna have him in order. You wanna go with Jake first? Okay. Somebody has that one in front of them? Oh, there it is.
The wage authorization and an LOU.
Okay, so I would make a motion, we authorize Jacob Volker.
Mm-hmm.
The forty hours a week for a salary rate of seventy thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars. Is that one or seven?
I think it's a seven.
Two hundred and fifty-seven dollars and thirty cents per year to be prorated for this first year.
Mm-hmm.
Second.
Further discussion on that? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
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 I read the, um-
Did you see that one to sign already? I think I did.
Yeah, yeah. This, this is why I was late tonight, I was sitting there trying to catch up on all these after work. I'm like, crap, it came through, so I'm, I did read them all before I got here. The wage authorization here was the MOU.
L, LOU, M.
LO, LOU. It was fine with me, so I make a motion that we approve the understanding as it is written.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to approve the MOU for Jake Volker, our newly elected treasurer, who will be starting his job here on October seventeenth. Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Then I would say, I make a motion to approve Justin Paulson. Compensation step one, minimum sixteen dollars an hour for fifteen hours a week for the library.
Good second.
We have a motion made and seconded for the wage authorization for Justine Paulson. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And make a motion that we approve the wage authorization for Zachary Warner. This appears to be a step increase.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Moving up to twenty-five, forty-eight an hour.
Second.
We have a ma, a motion made and seconded for, to approve the wage authorization for Zachary Warner to step to twenty-five, forty-eight an hour. These are election workers, I believe, that-
We got a vote on that?
The next four.
The next four.
Vote on the last one? We had motion to second, we didn't vote yet.
Well, I know that we have-
No, we didn't vote on the wage authorization.
Oh, we didn't vote for Zachary?
Nope, we had motion second.
Those in favor of the, we have a motion on, on that?
Yeah, we have motion second, just need to vote.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just get carried away with all of this affirmation.
I would make a motion to appoint the following personnel as election workers. Alfred J. Hamel, Eileen Rohidian, I wasn't gonna try the middle name. Christian O'Neal, or Christina, O'Neal, pardon me. And John O'Neal.
George.
George.
George O'Neal, yep, I need to get my glasses.
Okay.
Election workers.
I need one second.
We have a motion made and seconded to approve the four election worker recommendations. Are those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Hold the business?
Okay, I did submit the, in writing what I had for veterans policy. I tried to shorten it up as best I could and still get the meat of it without the example written in there. And so, I said, "It shall be the policy of the town of Barry to expedite any payments to veterans which rely on us for payment to be made. The veterans agent shall be authorized to hand carry any paperwork through the town departments. Each town department shall act on the paperwork as soon as possible. And when a payment is due, the accountant shall process the payment on the next ward."
I did have an occasion to hear from the veterans agent. And the veterans agent indicated that primary reason for delays and such payments have to do with the filings that happen by the veterans agents that go to the state.
Mm-hmm.
And the state has no necessary, you know, they, they don't, they don't hurry. And so, that is often the reason for, and he can't do anything about it. He said, "I can't do anything about that." So, as, as long as it says, "Experate payments may rely on us," the veterans agent shall be authorized to hand carry-
Which gives him permission, it doesn't obligate him.
You know, when, when he, after he gets all of the state paperwork done.
The only thing we're obligating is our town departments to, to take that paper and put it top of the stack and push it through.
Now, I know, I know recently, we had a complaint. Is that a commonplace complaint? I don't know, I've had-
I don't know either, but it's, one event, that's enough. I wouldn't have to see someone, I'd hate to see someone wait three months again for something that could be taken care of in less than a month in town.
Okay.
And that's what the intent of this was. And it, it doesn't, in any way, change what the state does. It doesn't in any way obligate the veterans and say, "You have to do this to people." But it gives him the authority under us to take this through the town departments if he chooses it, and if the veterans want him to. It, it's just giving him permission to hand carry it and saying the departments have gotta work with him. So, they're not putting themselves out saying, it was, I heard when I asked people if they might wanna process it quicker, they said, "I'm not gonna put my neck out and, and put someone ahead of everybody else."
Mm-hmm.
So, it just tells them, "We're gonna put the veterans payment ahead," that's all it's gonna do. And once again, anyone that wants to object- And once again, anyone that wants to object to that, feel free to email me, geo solv at townofbarry.com. I'd be glad to, um, correspond with you if you have any concerns or questions or my intent for it.
Be for, be for approval, do we want to put it on the table for, um, till our next meeting, in case there is any questions from the public?
And, that's fine, it's not a rush, rush in this, it's just I wanted to address it as soon as I can, so I have no objection to table until next month. Um, and if you have any recommendations to change, and I tried to make it as short and sweet as I could, um, it was a little long when I wrote the last meeting, but that was my turn.
Do we want to just say to hold it and for another two weeks?
Okay.
For public comment? And if we, we get that, uh, hopefully virtually people, somebody's listening to us, that, um, if they have some complaints or concerns, including the veterans' agent, but I think the way you've stated it, Greg, gives, you know, makes the intent clear, but doesn't tie anybody's hands or make someone try to circumvent the law.
They all-
The only amendment I was, would have made on the fly was just to add a little bit of language to clarify, literally just a couple words to clarify that the first part is dependent on the second sentence. But I think having some time to, to-
Yeah.
-smooth that out would be good.
Okay.
Yeah, I tried, that's why I say-
Literally just as such.
That's why I just tried to say-
Yeah.
If, if there's a payment due by the town, then the veterans may do these things. And the final statement is, if a payment is due, not, not they're going to do it, they said, "If the payment is actually due, then we just expediate it on the warrant."
Yeah.
Instead of waiting for the appropriate warrant, whatever week's away it is.
I, I agree with the intention of this.
I, I do agree with the intent as well, sir.
Feel free to, anything you want to pencil for changes, bring it next time, and we'll, we'll discuss it, and we'll see what the public has to say.
I think that's a really good one.
Thank you, thank you to Tanner.
Yeah, I've sent it out to, um, the, the departments that are involved in the abatement process to get some feedback from them. Um, and I guess the only concern that I would have here is that I wouldn't want somebody to misinterpret the policy and say, and get frustrated with our assessors or treasurer's office when, um, that, you know, when there might be a snag in the application that they